All right, let me check then, let's make sure.
This is good for us?
All right, Mr. Chairman, we're live, thank you.
Yeah, welcome back, everybody, we're in the afternoon session of November 21st. Our next agenda item is a presentation from Clearwater Financial and Inside Architects. This is not an action item, but this time I will turn it over to you guys and have at.
Mr. Chairman, it's a pleasure to be with you, Cameron Ariel, Clearwater Financial. I also have my colleague, Jase Perry, with me here in the commission room as well as Tori Cleary, our public engagement and economic development specialist is on with us as well. And we should also be getting Russ on with us as well from Inside Architects. But it's a pleasure to be with you and we're really excited to be reporting on our really good progress in the facilities and financial planning process and to really start getting into a little bit more of the meat of the process. So, wanted to just take a moment, if I could, to give an extreme shout out to two of your county elected officials, Doug Miller and Johanna DeFord, who are fantastic individuals to work with and have just been...
Rock stars.
Rock stars in this process, great, well put.
These are our system IT guy.
Oh wait, don't tell Doug that, no. Tell Johanna, but don't tell Doug, please.
I mean, I could go on and on, I mean Doug's just ability to execute, get his information, institutional knowledge, and then Johanna's just fire, spark, desire to really help the community move forward, it's just been infectious and it's been really, quite frankly, enjoyable to be working with you all on this project. So, kind of with that, we'll just dive in here. Advance the slide, let's see. So, we wanted to just kick off and give you just a brief overview of where we are. So, as you can kind of see here, we're in this November timeframe and we're kind of towards the tail end of this analysis phase. And so, again, what this means is, is we've done a really good, deep dive into your current status. You know, you'll know the old ancient proverb, "Know thyself." Really important that we know Valley County, what assets you have, what condition they're in, where they're located, what they're adjacent to, and so on, and we'll get into the details of this in a moment. That, that's the core, basic foundational building block of any good plan is to start with a good basis. And so, we feel really good about that, it's been certainly comprehensive in nature and I, I'm just really pleased with, with that entire process. Kudos to a lot of your folks, we've interviewed your entire staff as well as elected official group, there's a lot of passion and really just a concern and interest in the future of the county, that's, that's been incredible. We've also had a lot of really good conversation with external stakeholders and we'll, we'll get into that in greater detail as well and that's, that's commonly shared as well, that just people really love the Valley, love being here and are very interested in the future of where the county's, county's headed. So, all of that being said, I think we're very pleased with where, where we, where we've kind of initiated and into this analysis phase and then on to the rest of the process as we go forward. So, very, very timely and great opportunity to connect with you all with where we are. Just to kind of get into a little bit more detail, just to show kind of the work to date, and I would say, you know, as much from the consultant team as well as from the internal team, it's been just really good, kind of a good, consistent grind, if that makes sense. We've, we've really been able to chew through this and, and get it in, in a good process. Well, just kind of articulate that a little bit, so we have a weekly working group meeting, so every Thursday morning, we kind of just track everything, where we are, what assignments need to be done and what's, what's been going on. And again, Johanna and Doug have been instrumental in that and it's been fantastic. So, we have a few things that are still in process and a few things that are, again, very much complete and now we're, we're kind of transitioning out of analysis and into testing. So, again, really pleased with, with the progress.
They're way ahead from the timeline.
We are.
This testing was like next summer.
Yeah.
That's awesome.
Cameron, can you, can you give us an idea of what you're talking about when you talk about stakeholders, I mean, are we talking about...
Yeah.
...extension or foreclosure or just, just typical county.
So, yeah, we, let me, let me back up and that's a great question, Commissioner. So, stakeholders, we mean that both internal as well as external to the county. So, internal meaning all of the county elected officials, key staff. Then, from there, we, we go to the external side, which is, you know, major industry, other municipal entities, healthcare, schools, the cities in the valley, and then also we've done a little bit outside of the valley, Adams County in particular, there's, there's a connection there and then some work with the economic development community. So, oh, I'll throw in their airport as well. We, we really tried to be very broad and conscientious of who touches the county and why and really collecting a lot of good feedback on the, again, for that basis of analysis. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd be interested to see your comments.
Yes, we'll, we'll definitely give you the highlights there and then as reference, we'll, we'll give you the, the information there too, so. So, with that, we'll just dive right into the, the initial facilities assessments. And so, to kind of kick it off, we, we start with the courthouse, it's, it's really kind of the heart of the county, if you will, it's where the main functions are, it's where a lot of the goings on occur. It's also very much adjacent to other key functions, so you have the EOC, the Sheriff's Office, the court, jail and so on, that are, that are right here in, in the courthouse complex. You know, just the reality is, is the, the core of it is, is old, it's over 100 years old, additions in 1976 as well as in 2005. There's also, you know, a, a lot of, of, of good functionality already occurring, but certainly space, as you all know, is, is a need as well as function. And that kind of has manifested itself in different ways and we'll get into that in a little bit, but, you know, certainly the ability to make certain aspects of the courthouse up to code, ADA in particular, as well as, you know, some heating and cooling, security, so on, those types of things are, are of concern. And I, I don't think that any of that's new to anyone, but it's, I think, again, it's important to get it down, documented, so we have, again, a good basis. The Judicial Center, it's, it's a really good building, functions really well, it was great to tour that, I'm forgetting the sergeant's name, but again, good, good folks, good passion in there, but there is some, some growth needs, space needs in, in that facility. And we'll, we'll get to kind of what that means in a moment as well. And then we have the EOC, again, great facility, a lot of good space, you know, there's the, I think, some great innovation going on in the EOC and then also there are aspects of it that could be, you know, utilized differently or, or to maximize the, this, the space use. Anything else there, Jase, you'd add?
No.
Okay. The U of I extension, so I think you're all familiar with this upgrade that's, that's occurred there, it's an older building, not in the best of condition and ADA is a concern, but again, you know, a, a good, good building. Building and grounds, you know, I think the, the portable unit is, is a good use of space and also a good way to, to get facilities and space needs met. And you'll see here at a moment, the, through the adjacency map, that really building and ground kind of touches everything, not in a, what we would call a strong adjacency need, but it does touch everything and so it's something to consider, you know, broadly with the county. But again, I don't, I don't think anyone would agree that that's a long-term ideal way to, to do the, the building and grounds needs. We have the Idaho Street properties, which again, I, I would just compliment the, the county for kind of looking to the future there, I think there's, there's a lot of great property, there's a lot of great potential, a lot of old structures, some of them are usable, some of them are being used, you know, in a, in a, a good reasonable fashion, others are, you know, underutilized. So, I think that is something, you know, you'll recognize the second bullet there, consider for housing or other economic development purposes, I think you're, you're, there's a real, real gem that could be uncovered and, and polished. So, we'll, we'll talk about that certainly throughout the testing and, and the analysis process as well. So, again, the parking and storage property on North Main, really saw that as a, as a really high potential opportunity as well, centrally located along the main thoroughfare, it could be, again, economic and housing uses for that and, and potentially county space needs as well.
Cameron, North Main, you're talking the north parking lot over here, those two lots.
Okay, yeah, you got it. All right, okay, so the road department, so this is, this is one that I think is a nut that we're just starting, or an onion we're just starting to unpeel, because it's really a complex, right, you have the fairgrounds there...
It does stink, I will stay there.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Okay.
It just came to my mind.
There's no use, onion is in there.
Onion, huh, all right. Let's stick with the onion analogy. There's really good facilities there, there's also, you know, a lot of old buildings, underutilized buildings. This is one that I think in general, you see it there under the existing fairgrounds, Russ, Russ was very, I would say, clear on if, if the fairgrounds is to be something, it, it probably needs to go through a, a master planning process to truly understand what that is from the community's perspective and then put together, again, we can fold that into a, a potential financial plan as well to, to execute on that. That would be something, obviously, in addition to what we're considering. So, we, I guess we would park that for now, but something that you all can kind of stew on and, and see what you think. Again, it's just abundantly clear that there's some opportunity, really economic development, development opportunity there at the fairgrounds, especially where it's, you know, very close to Whitewater Park, the new rec center down there, just a little bit more to the south, you, you have something really cool that's brewing there that the county could be instrumental in, in pouring some gas on. We'll just kind of park that with you as a, as a potential addition to, to what we're considering. And then the Gold Dust property, I think this is one as well that, you know, good, good, basic buildings could be a logical relocation for the roads department, given its location in the county, function of the roads department and so on. So, again, just planting some seeds, but again, just a good basis for where we're at. Anything else, Serge?
Something, one key point on the existing roads buildings, it's probably of a more immediate need is the separation between the office space and the, or I guess really the ventilation of the office space and the workshops and the, some hazard, hazardous environment there for the workers, so something that came up in the process of analyzing those buildings.
I think, and I don't remember, until I was looking at that picture, that that office was added later on, a three bay shop.
Just a thought on the fairgrounds too, we had kind of talked, we were just having a meeting last week, but is there an opportunity to add additional ground to the county's assets in order to provide additional parking there and additional, additional recreation? Got in the back of your mind, too?
Yeah, that, that is something that, I mean, aptly stated, I think there's a lot of potential there for something meaningful, at least in the, in the southern part of the county, that could be a draw for the entire county if it's, if it's planned appropriately. But yeah, that's, that's a good point. Okay.
Do you want to pull up the report?
Oh, yeah, thank you, Jase.
Yeah, and one of the, the products of this process is an inventory report of assets and so what we've done, working with Doug and Johanna, is pulled all of the county assets into a report, identified them and then provided some characteristics and we wanted to save a couple of trees, so we didn't print the whole thing out for everybody because it's 170 pages, but wanted to give you an insight into this and it, it will continue to, we'll continue to add to it as we go through the process until we get a final product and be able to provide that to you so you have that in the end, but wanted to just give you a, a quick look at kind of the, the base document of all of the assets of the, the county.
Yeah, and Jase, I appreciate Jase bringing this up because you can kind of see some of the, we won't go into this in any great detail, but this is a lot of that sausage making that's really gotten us to where we are. So, we've, we've really done a deep dive into every single asset of the county and then from there, we kind of layered on top of that, okay, which ones make the most sense to do a deeper dive? You know, there's little strange parcels that don't make sense or, you know, just assets that, that aren't worth the focus, but, you know, again, through the, through the, you know, the process, we were able to really dive into, into this and this is just meant to give you a taste for some of that. So, here's a comprehensive list, we've also identified, you know, some, some adjustments potentially, you know, and this has been really helpful too, because then we'll know, hey, how do we actually map this and what does it actually look like and who's the actual owner, things of that nature. So, really, it was, it was helpful just to do that. Again, you can see some of these, we just, we just aren't, not, it's not under review or it wasn't, it wasn't necessary to do so. So, you can kind of get a taste for, for everything that we looked through and then those that we did, let's quickly get there, you can, so this is the justice facility, we did a high level map, identified it, zoom in, you know, and kind of enabled us to do a deeper dive into it. And so, again, not to, not to bore you to death with, with all this detail, but it is literally every single asset of the county has been identified and, and analyzed, so. And, and again, you'll, you'll have access to this and to Jase's point, we'll continue to build on this as we, as we go forward. And I would mention too, some of the key ones that we did analyze, you'll see some of that analysis start to build out, so this is a good example of the EOC building and kind of some of that detail. So, notes in it, you know, the age of it, across the board, all of those things. Thank you. Okay, so, gonna kind of, so, since we've talked about the, you know, this kind of basic area, we did want to kind of talk through just some of the work environment items. I think this quote is, is good, "Making do," I think is a good way to describe, in fact, I think that came out of some of the internal stakeholder commentary is, hey, look, it's not ideal, but we love what we do and we're making do with the facilities we have. And so, just keeping that in mind, especially as we look to the future and, and how that can be of, of concern and or benefit as we analyze where to go and the future. So, just some, some challenges and opportunities. So, there, there is some concern that, of looking at the, at the public and serving the public, how do we best do that, are things best located where they are to serve the public, are they not, what makes the most sense? That is something that I think the existing facilities doesn't quite address ideally. And then, you know, there are some departments that are just put places where they have to be, fitting in, fitting, you know, so, again, things of, of consideration, lack, lack of workspace equity, you know, we could get into the detail of that, but I think you get the, you know, the, the point. Yeah, you know, and I think the need for an adequately sized and furnace break room would, would go a long way with, with employees and then the connection to an outdoor patio, so just being able to access the outdoors easy and seamlessly. Some really good feedback was across the board, people enjoyed the, the updated security and the one point of access to the lobby, I think that was a great, great addition, that was very unanimous there. And then, and then of course, the county's openness to remote work is, I think, a really, has been a real big benefit to employees as well as just the space demands, facility demands as well. Anything else on that?
No, hey, especially in the courthouse and I think the, when we talk a little bit about the workspace equity is just the, the, working conditions for departments varies different, you know, and not, and not just the courthouse, depending on where they're located and that, that came up quite a bit as having the opportunity for workspace for everybody that works within the county to have the same amenities available to them and the same working conditions, so that, that's something that kind of came up in that process and kind of goes back to the, you know, making do, you know, the county is doing what it can with what it has and that was a common theme that's come up so far in the initial analysis of things.
Okay, now we're going to get to some of the other facilities, so the Lake Fork property, it's, it's a great property, that was one thing that really jumped out really quickly is just what, what a cool asset and where it's located. You know, you do have underutilized offices and shop space and there's a, a lot of outbuildings there, but again, the, you know, some thought and consideration that came through some of the internal interviews was that could be a potential location for the rec department and potentially a, again, with the space there, a, a regional park facility was, was brought up, so kind of plant, plant that there. McCall Annex, again, great asset, it's a really good building, it's serving the needs up there, the use, I think, is somewhat undefined or, or could be, you know, defined in this process, what is the future use of that annex look like? And just some of the feedback, some of this from the, our interviews with McCall, and this is, I think, something where the, the county could really lead out on is just a, a good collaboration there, continued collaboration with the city. The McCall Police has significant, I'll quote that, space needs and there could be a, who knows what form or fashion that takes, but a cool partnership with, with the city and, and in particular, that, that asset.
Okay, Cameron, in, in that conversation, are they wanting to take over the full facility or are they looking to relocate out of that, which would allow us more space?
It's a great question, Commissioner, I think that's, that's really up to, you know, the collaboration, right? I think it could go either way, they've just, they just do have significant space needs and again, through that, through that collaboration, I'm sure a, a really good mutually beneficial solution could be identified. Yeah, nothing definitive at this point, I believe. Again, just a great asset and, and, and opportunity. Okay, so then, part of this analysis, then we go to the, the adjacencies. So, what this means is, is basically what functions have concurrent need or co-location need or just access needs to other functions of the county. So, can look a little bit like gobbledygook, but we'll try to kind of give you a taste for this and what it means and I think probably aptly, we'll start with, you know, you all, the commissioners, you do have quite a bit of folks that touch, touch the commission. So, you can see these, these big blue lines are the ones that are, you know, the major adjacencies, so the public obviously needs to have great access and connection to the commission. You can see also that, you know, the planning department has, has great need as well as, let's see, what was this, the clerk's office, deals directly with you guys quite often. Then there's some soft adjacencies as well, so the building and grounds and then IT. And so, you can see, and I'm, you know, I'm sure this is imperfect, but this gives you those major touch points that, that matter. I would note that the clerk has major touches with a lot, you know, a number of, of entities as well as, you know, you have the public as a, has to be, has to be a major consideration with, with these types of analysis. And then you have the sheriff planning and building, this is a little bit deceptive because, you know, you could arguably have these be in the same, so that's something to consider. But then, I would also note the prosecutor has, albeit just a few strong ones, they have a number of other adjacencies that you can see. So, and then of course, building grounds and IT, wow, they touch everything, although that's, we call that just a, a simple adjacency. This is again, really important and good to understand because it's what's currently occurring.
Something that seems missing up there is HR and the, I mean, if you look at our connection points, we really do connect to anyone that is a direct report up here because the human resource function of that is something that I don't, I don't see HR even called out up there.
It's a great, great point.
Those are touch points that are, need to be strong and maintained, so.
Yeah, and it, it's a great point, that I think the reason why you don't see that is it's a facility adjacency, whereas, you know, if we're talking more of a programmatic or service adjacency, that may be, that would, that would look certainly different than that, but you're, you're...
I'm thinking about the fact that people would need to get to an HR office in our absence, you know, I mean, that would be, if you would really need there, that office needs to be adjacent.
Yeah.
Out too, so.
Yeah, great point and I would just add, you know, as we go through this process, you know, we, as we overlay projection, future growth and all these things, the, the recommendations will come with arguably different adjacency maps, so how to, how to locate certain things, certain places and what that will look like. So, just know that this is, this, this is the basis that we're working on. Any questions on that at all?
Well, really, Cameron, I think there ought to be a line between the prosecutor and the commissioners too, a purple line.
Oh, yeah, short one right there.
Yep.
If I say blue, you, you guys, you may know I'm...
Whatever.
Whatever it is.
I'm, I'm colorblind, so not surprised I got it wrong. But yeah, that, I think you're right, there's not, not perfect, but from a, you know, a facility's perspective. Okay. This was a, this was an interesting topic that came up, is the idea of sustainability opportunities, we did hear it a couple times, the geothermal opportunity that runs underneath particularly this, this building as well as other adjacent buildings, something that to consider. And then also, as the county goes forward, two things that, you know, were major considerations from the architects were the idea of, you know, effective insulation, air barriers and then high performance, you know, windows and doors could be a real big, quite frankly, cost savings. Not to say the least would be just the comfort from the, from the employees and the public. So, two, two sustainability opportunities that we wanted to pull, pull out of that information. And then as we get into programs and vision, so this is just, you know, four points to kind of consider again from a facility's perspective, so roads department, you know, there's a lot of equipment, a lot of vehicles, so how do we, how do we really service them as well as locate them? And then are there still some pieces that are maintained by building and grounds and recreation? So, some things that... So some things there. I would say from, certainly from a facilities and from an interview, interview perspective, and you'll get a taste of this from the external interviews as well, is that housing is a uniform need, a concern, so internal employees in particular as well as external, and we'll talk more about the external piece in a moment, but just partnerships here with, across the county, you know, there are other municipalities, other major industry that are already trying to tackle this or, and/or have, and so this could be a, a way for the county to convene that conversation and lead that conversation, I think, could be, could be helpful. And not just from the ability to provide good service to the community, to the county, but also from an economic development perspective, there's, there's a, there's a role there to play from the county to, to help the economy grow. And I would highlight the idea of public transit. Again, not thinking here next year, doing a big rail system with trains and whatever, but something that could really help housing is just the ability for people to get from one locale to another cheaply could be a, a, a big part of that solution. So we'll talk about that more from some of the external stakeholder feedback. Fairgrounds, we kind of mentioned this, but two questions that Russ wanted to highlight in particular was just, you know, what's, what, what is the vision for the fairgrounds? If the answer is, is, well, we don't know, that's, that's okay, that's a good question to probably, you know, put into a, a master planning process and, and, and get the public involved in answering that question as well. And then, yeah, just a bigger picture potential. You know, thinking too is, it is where the fairgrounds is located, I think is an important point. You know, there, there was some feedback of what, what fairgrounds, and that was coming from folks, you know, in the north side of the county, so is it a question maybe of relocation, relocating the fairgrounds? I don't know, but it, or, and/or is it, let's make it a more prominent feature in our county that creates a southern economic hub? So again, good feedback there, but I think questions that would be unearthed through a master planning process. The senior center, again, great facility, but again, what, you know, what does the use of the community center need to be, I think is a, is a, is a good question, excuse me, the senior center? And then, you know, what uses continue or don't continue in that space?
Technically, it is a community center.
Okay.
We should take senior off that.
Okay.
It was transitioned two years ago to be a community center.
Okay.
We need to really change that focus.
We will do that, yep. All right. So yeah, let, back to Elle's question, or the commissioner's question about the, the stakeholders and, and some of their feedback. So we did, we identified, I think, fifteen key stakeholders, we've gotten to eleven, and we're hoping to hit the last four here pretty quickly. Again, that's why that was in process, we're still trying to get those last four, but really good feedback, so you can see, you know, geographically, they're throughout the county, so it's north and south, east and west, as, as you can get in the county, it includes all the municipalities, so our municipal partners, as well as major industries and business, small business, healthcare, median economic development, so again, really good in, input here from, from the external side, people that definitely have a stake in the future of the county from an economic, employment, you know, basis, and, and really good, good feedback. So kind of some of the things that we just pulled out that were, were very much uniform, growth was, was a concern and opportunity, I think is important. The idea of collaboration with the county was, was uniform, everybody really appreciated that the county's going through this process, would love, you know, would love to have that partnership with the county going forward, and some of them are in, you know, a process of trying to address that growth in their own planning processes. Some are further along, some are more infantile, some are basic, some are more elaborate, but the point being is that there's a lot of planning going on around growth. And that kind of leads us to the second bullet point is, again, I think where the county can lead is, is providing a, a good umbrella comprehensive plan for, for the county. This can help with land use, rubs, you know, that manifested itself in various forms. One that comes to mind that, that kind of sticks out was just the airport, adjacent uses around the airport, FAA best practice and guidelines around aviation planning, those types of things could go a long way with the countywide land comprehensive planning process.
And to add on, it was interesting, even talking to the municipalities who struggled with kind of their own land use and development plans, looking for extra guidance from the county, and even the, from the development side, developers that, you know, all, where kind of the environment is now is they kind of, kind of drive the ship, and then the decisions are made based on what's brought forward, and having that comprehensive plan or that long-term plan would help them as well in their developments and their desires to grow because they would know what areas of location are designated for certain uses across the county, and so it was all for, for a little bit different reasons, but uniform feedback that, that county could play a big role and really help growth going forward and defining where it goes and how it goes.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Jase. Yeah, and I, and again, that is something that, for you all to consider, again, somewhat is out, outside of the scope of facilities and financial planning, but definitely was something that was unearthed and, you know, would love to help the county with that process as well, if, if deemed necessary.
Been having that conversation.
Yeah. Heather, when we last updated the comp plan, it was in?
Twenty eighteen.
Eighteen. I feel like we're, we're not all the way there, but we're really close.
We don't have a future land use map, and some of our codes are outdated.
But that kind of follows with our last Monday's conversation, and that was brought up, that we, we already have recognized, at least part of the people, that is a, kind of something we better start thinking about, and everyone knows it's bad, the way it is, just, say. But that is, is kind of interest, it's kind of jog away from the facilities thing from you guys.
Yeah, and it's, it just, it just rose to the top, I mean, because you have people who really, not, not only business enterprise, but other municipalities that are, quite frankly, just struggling with it. So certainly something.
That's an interesting comment, because we're one of two counties that don't have zoning, and I never thought about, maybe that's making it tough on the cities to plan long-term. I know we have kind of a, I'm not gonna say a rec, but a lot of discussion lately about the impact areas of the cities.
Right.
And I know we're gonna work some more on that, but I think the comprehensive plan we did in eighteen was a lot better than the one that was done back in the early nineties. I mean, it is getting better, better, it's not like it's a bad comp plan. To go to zoning in this county would be an act of God.
Something to consider, certainly.
Yeah.
What's interesting came up through your analysis.
Yep.
I was kind of wondering how that happened.
Yeah, and it's simply just reporting to you what, what's external stakeholders are, are saying. The third bullet here, just needed services, and I think this will be, this is certainly true of the current, so you have cities, well, and we could include even the, the education world as well, but just infrastructure is a real, real need, and so you couple that with the current reality with what the future need would be, I think it's, again, is this something that the county solves? I don't know, but I, I think it's important that, that you are aware of those struggles that are going on with some of the, the other municipalities out there. And then, of course, you know, where potentially the county could participate is in things like transit, like EMS, you know, a centralization of some of these services. Anyway, so just, just, again, awareness that this is some of that feedback from, from folks. Anything else there, Jase? Okay. And then just kind of in conclusion with some of the stakeholder stuff, so we, we touched on work on, on housing, but wanted to kind of give the, the external stakeholder bent to this, this is something that they really, is a real need, and, and they're seeing it not only from a, from an employee, so the ability to hire and retain employees and able to help, help them find housing in the county is very difficult, then also that it's, it's an economic thing, so enabling people to, to affordably live in the county is, is a concern. And like we mentioned, the independent conversations are already occurring in force, so, you know, it could, it could be a topic that the, the county could convene and, and lead on. Again, is it, the county come with the solution? I don't know, but just starting that conversation could make some sense in that, in that aspect.
So you know, I was in DC last week talking about county-led initiatives when it comes to workforce housing, and so I'm co-chairing a NACO mission on this, and we will come back in the next six months and have a full plan that counties can look at, help identify the things that might work in their communities. So there is a large conversation around counties and how we can take, help take the lead on housing and some of these conversations.
And that's, that's somewhat serendipitous, and it sounds like it's nationwide need.
Everybody in the room had the exact same conversation. It didn't matter if you were a thousand units short or ten thousand units short, exactly the same conversation.
I think one, one takeaway with that and being involved in the conversation as the county, because there are so many different conversations, to really bring some efficiency to whatever the solution is, I think the county sits at a, a unique position to be able to do that, so there isn't, there aren't duplicative efforts to try to solve the problem.
And some of the things we're working on, I'm working on anyway right now, but which will come back to this board, is we're gonna work with the local trust, the housing trust is actually expanding their board right now, so that's gonna be one conversation. They will be the lead to take this conversation out to the community, but also the Economic Development Council has a Workforce CAT, which is a community action team, and we're actually meeting tomorrow. So there's a lot of things that's actually happening, which will empower the conversation. County may not have to take that lead, the Economic Development Council will take that lead and take it forward with the housing trust. But there's a lot of work happening, it's just kind of behind the scenes still.
No, that's, that's cool, and, and again, I think that, that would go a long way with the external stakeholders, it's just seeing some, some additional movement there. I would compliment the county with some of the workforce-related development there, kind of to the south of the Annex in, in McCall, that really cool stuff that's been going on there with, with that leased ground to development, and I just think it, it very, you know, with everything that's kind of brewing and that has been done, just some awareness around it might be a, a good step, too, just so people know, hey, look, we're, we're actively engaged in this, we're wanting to.
Developer, that's gonna sit on the housing trust, so I'm really excited about that.
Because I, I mean, to be honest, that doesn't happen everywhere, and where the county's already been doing some of that proactively is, is a big deal.
Well, we've been able to use a lot of the new code, the six oh two N N, which is a, a property tax re, not a rebate, but for a lot of housing, we did one for up here on, above the school for seventeen units there, and that one, I think, is pretty well done. I know we've, biggest issue with those kind of projects is the land, gotta get the land first, get started, and that's always been the challenge.
So and again, the, well, I know we'll get into this as we get further into the process, but the county's well positioned with, with some of that land asset barrier to entry that you're talking about, Commissioner, and, and how best to go about that, because it's, it's gonna be a really cool part of this process. We talked about, you know, the rec facility idea, I think you have uniform interest in that.
Is this the Doug Miller Recreation Facility?
Doug Miller Recreation.
I'm not putting anyone's name on it.
You know, I, especially from the education stakeholders and just from a quality of life perspective, it can make a lot of sense, and there's a, you know, there, there's a path to be plowed or at least explored, so.
With that, the, the, the interest, not only from the stakeholders of having a facility, but also being a part of making that facility happen, which was really encouraging, there was some, some key players that would be interested in helping that come to fruition if that was a possibility.
Jase, I'm assuming that this is probably gonna have to be on city sewer and water, it's not gonna be out here in the county somewhere, it's gonna have to be a facility, maybe two or three facilities, but it needs city services to work.
Likely, we haven't gotten that deep into analyzing the actual facility, but I, I don't know the answer to that yet.
So there's a conversation, but I can't have it on, on the camera, but there is something happening there, too, that you and I.
And then, you know, we've talked about the fairgrounds, the, the only other item I'd mention in this, this aspect would be just the, you know, a true consideration of whatever is envisioned there, the economic impact of it, because I think that, that is one thing that somewhat unknown even of the current impact, then certainly what, what, what would be envisioned there, truly understanding what that would mean to the county and countywide would be a, a major consideration.
Okay, Cameron, that's another study, is what I'm hearing from you. So we've already talked about starting that, so if it needs to come from this body to get that started, we need to have that conversation before we invest a ton of money in down there, and then have that.
Yeah, I think so, too, I think kind of what we've been doing now is just kind of fishing for different facilities to see what different things look like, but we're a ways out for that, I think we need to get the road department gone first and all that, settled and done, cleaned up before we can even go down that road. The fair board is very interested, and they are working towards some plans and looking at other facilities, what works, what doesn't.
But having an actual plan with public input would be important, I think we kind of asked that, but.
Yeah, I think it's, once we get something kind of sketched out, so to speak, we can then get the public involved and say, what do you guys think? And it may be such a deal that we want to do some kind of a recreation facility inside this structure for winter recreation, for indoor sports, so to speak, because there's a lot of people that don't ski and don't snowmobile and don't want to go outside, so, you know.
Yeah, and great point, so yes, this would be something in addition to what we're doing now, but it, it's very clear through the, through the, the interviews and the stakeholder feedback that that's, that's of interest.
Think to do it correctly, what I, what, I, I think a third party's conversation would be important, because I think, you know, we can go out and look at different buildings, but we're certainly not architects and putting on, on that structure correctly, and just having a full conversation about that would be important, so I would just be interested to see how much that would cost, what the cost would be to complete something like that, would be interesting.
Well, what's really cool is there's a lot of people that feel the same way, you know, we just kind of threw it out as a joke, as the Doug Miller Facility, and look how it's, it cut off.
It should be the, probably the Johanna, something or other.
Johanna De Fort, Doug Miller.
We'll, we'll leave the naming for a future. We'll, we'll leave the naming for a future conversation, but no, I, I, I think just you're, you're, you're right in line. The idea that um, the community really does see an opportunity there.
I don't know, we tried to pass one a few years ago, and I got my hand it to me on a platter about that. That'll be a br, a vibrant conversation to have.
Yeah. Um, did you have someone, Jase?
No, I, I guess just more in kind of wrapping it up, just some ancillary feedback around facilities and the conversations. And something that did come through in the stakeholder interviews is that, in general, the relationships with the county are strong, uh, positive. There's seen improvement over the last, especially the last two or three years, they've seen improvement uh with all of the departments and those that they work with. So uh, kudos to the commissioners and and the county elected officials and the department heads for doing a good job of, of building relationships and working with stakeholders across. So wanted to share that with you as, as ancillary feedback that came through the process. And, and I think that led to kind of the, the last bullet point ultimately is there's a lot of desire to collaborate. So when you look at county facility needs and and over the, the future, um, meeting those needs, I, I don't think that the county's in a position where you gotta tackle those all on your own, so.
Well, I appreciate that, Jase, because this job, you don't get a lot of cookies with. All you get is your butt chewed every, you do something wrong, so. That means a lot, but I think it is important to, to kinda go out to the public and say, here's, here's the boundaries of what we're looking at. Help us refine it. If you go out with just a broad, empty piece of paper, you're gonna get so many ideas that it gets bogged down. I've seen it happen over and over and over. And if we give parameters that this is what we're trying to do, then you get a lot of more personal thinking involved, but yeah, we go much to work.
I think a couple of things that really hit me is, you know, you started this with a, at least when I was thinking about it, you know, as a review of our facilities, what we need to operate. And when you took, went to that, went to the stakeholder side of it. What's done, what's happened there a little bit is sort of kind of paralleled the stuff that we've been talking about in-house a little more. And, and it was kinda like a, maybe an unexpected caveat of this thing. And so like, for instance, uh, the, this discussion about the sports complex, that was kinda interesting. That there's other people out there in the community that are saying, well, that's something that this community needs. Understanding that correctly. I mean, how did, I mean, how does that come about? So it's, so you, when you're talking to those people, apparently they're pretty free. Well, yeah, we think that whatever, it reinforces conversation we have here.
Yeah, that's a great point, Commissioner. It's just, it's been really cool, and I, you know, I'd be, uh, I'm sure, I'm sure um Doug and and Johanna feel the same way. It's just been really cool to just kinda scratch the surface of some of the the energy that that already exists in in Valley County, some of the, and the common goals, common interests, common solutions that are already kinda brewing uh around some of these topics. So, yeah, Jase's point is, is very astute that um the community, uh, major stakeholders in the community want to, want to collaborate, want to solve this stuff, advance the county's.
And then, before like the grounds and stuff, two, two areas that seem to stand out, I, I think for the whole, is this fairgrounds, road department thing, it just seems to, it's stood out in your mind as well as theirs. Or is it, it really seems to need, need some more attention than others. So, and then is interested to comp plan update, of all things, came into this discussion.
Yeah, I found that very interesting too.
Yeah, so, but it didn't come from us, came from public, you know, essentially. So one, one other question, when we look at these facilities, we're sitting in, I said, if I understand it correctly, the old original facility here, now when we start, you know, I'm, I'm sure that's quite a ways down the road, but when thinking kinda out of the box a little bit, do you stay where you are? Do you protect that historical nucleus? And that, that part that we got out of our discussion of the day was a lot of people in the departments like the idea of continuing to be a hub operation. You, you had your diagram, year-round diagram, it kinda pointed everybody working together. And so that's another one that sounds like you revisited as well.
Well, and I honestly think that there are times that some, it's important that we have everybody in this facility. You know, so far with the prosecutor's meeting to the title company, it's been working great, but those guys are gonna get tired of driving back and forth and back and forth all day long to do stuff here, so. And, and to me, it helps some morale issue when they're here. Know that, you know, we're all one kind of big family working together for the same side, and, and I know they miss us.
And I think there's pros and cons, because something happens to the building and you lose your entire county, that's not a positive either. You know, we gotta have that backup plan if something happens to this structure, that a hundred-year-old structure. It's never a good thing to have that as your plan A.
But I'd say though, that if you look at the hub thing, you know, have to be under the same roof probably.
Or on the same campus.
Yeah, I said, but long-distance separation could create issues.
But you've got three buildings right here. They're all on the campus, which allow us to, you know, collaborate, but not within the same roof structure.
Yeah, so I mean, that's, so, yeah, if you talk about something happened to one, you know, the whole thing going down. So having a multiple unit complex, but somehow having it within a reasonable working range of each other. It's economical as well as environmentally sound sometimes.
It's a great point, Commissioners, and, and that really does bring us to kind of some of the next steps. Um, because you're already, you know, hatching ideas in your brain, and certainly that, you know, our, us as a consulting team.
That's always a problem.
Yes.
It is for me anyway, my husband.
It's because we have money. It doesn't mean we have to spend it.
Correct, and, and how to be astute with that, I think, is really what we're trying to, to fold into this whole conversation with the financial piece. So you'll see, you know, as we, as we kinda bulldoze through, you know, the remainder of the analysis piece, which I think we're, we're really well on our way. Um, we are gonna get into the testing piece, and this is gonna be interesting, because we will schedule with you again um follow-up where we start to put some scenarios before you. And what would this look like, and when would we do it, and how much would it cost, you know, because we, we will put together some preliminary cost estimates. Uh, we'll do some evaluation and provide you some scenario, so that um, now that starts to take the shape truly of a long-range plan. So that, that'll be the next, next piece of this. Uh, we also will start folding in. Um, we'll definitely be bugging Doug and Johanna a lot, because it's finance and the demographic forecasting. So we'll start talking about um future land use, what's going on in the county, where is that happening, and at what scale. Uh, we'll start talking about population growth. What does that do to facilities? What does that do to services? So again, uh, this next phase will be, I think, enlightening to all of us as we, as we kinda continue through the process.
Cameron, did you guys get the engineering report from the Lake Fork property?
We did, didn't we?
The septic.
I remember seeing that maybe.
Look at the septic, because that will, you know, that, that unfortunately would allow us to do some housing there, but not what we were looking toward with, you know.
Is, is that county-owned?
It is county-owned.
And it's got a really super high water tank.
Okay.
All that country out there does.
Great for a beautiful park. Larry's excited, hearing park there. Um, but putting a lot of housing there, we can do some. It, it will take standard septic systems, but, you know, it'd have to be larger lots, and is that the highest and best use of county ground? Just put a bunch of houses, you know, on a larger lot. Doesn't make sense, but.
Surging waters.
Yeah, so I just wanna make sure you guys had that, that environmental impact study or that environmental study um with the septics.
Okay, now I wanna ask, is there anybody in the audience that wants to answer, ask a question, please, feel free, you guys? If anybody has anything they wanna say or suggest?
And then we have one parcel that's outside of McCall, that we have someone that would like to consider purchasing that. Is that going to be something that you guys will help inform us on, is which parcels we should keep and which we should maybe look at selling or? Just curious.
Yeah, so again, through that in-depth analysis, we'll, we'll provide kind of some basics, you know, stuff, hey, look, this looks like surplus. I could, if you, if you wanted like some serious, you know, um I would call it um kind of a more of a highest to best use and potential kind of um negotiation, if you will. We do do that uh quite extensively with Ada County and their, their assets, so that could be something we'd, we'd absolutely be willing to help with.
Well, that's good to know, because, you know, I'm just thinking of, for example, if we decided we wanted to sell the annex to McCall City Police, but we wanna take that money and go somewhere else in McCall and do something with it. Whether it's a recreational facility or it's a, you know, another part-time DMV, or I'm just throwing out ideas, or you guys would look at that.
Yeah, we can absolutely do that and provide you um data, provide you truly what is the, what is the cost benefit of doing something like that? Are there different ways of doing that, it, you know, and the benefits of that, you know, if it's a public-practical partnership, if it's outright sale, so on and so forth. Sometimes, um, you know, uh, if it's in McCall, there could be urban renewal, uh, tax increment implication. So there's, there's analysis that we can provide you in your decision-making, so you can say, yeah, uh, that does make sense to, you know, partner on that or sell that or do whatever that, that may be.
How small can you do an urban renewal? Can it be a block size?
Yeah, so for example, we've advised uh for years the City of Meridian, and they have basically a four parcel block that they did a single urban renewal on. Like Caldwell can be your entire city. I don't know that I'd recommend that, but hope that's true urban renewal if you're just overlaying it over a single-family residential. But uh, that being said, there's, there's different ways of doing that. We can, we can help in the formation of that. Ada County is, is considered, um, I guess there's, um, I wanna say it's Jerome County is the only county that has a county-led and organized urban renewal in the state. Uh, but it's, it's a possibility if that's of interest. We can help with those.
You know, all, all of our properties are listed in this GIS thing like current. We got a lot of parcel land down at the bottom in the valley and got so some, so like a few things scattered around.
Yep, every single property has been identified.
Yeah, so.
Cameron, what's the timeline?
So back, uh, back to that, let me see.
This is something we can get now.
I just minimized that.
Can you get us this building and land?
Is there a website or something to get that, or?
Yeah, yeah, we, we absolutely will get this to you. Um, it's still a work in progress, but it, um, you can have it for the state it's in now. Again, you've got, it's got every piece of data you would ever want on every asset the county owns. And then, uh, again, back to the kind of meat of it is which ones of these are we taking a hard look at, um, I think is, is important. And, and then back to the timeline. So, yeah, we're, we're ahead of schedule, so you can see we're pretty much all, I think, almost all the way through analysis. There's just a few stakeholder interviews that we need to do. And then a few of this, you know, demographic and analysis forecast, and then we're gonna be squarely into testing. So, uh, yeah, really pleased with the, the progress of the process, where we are to date.
I'm looking at this as far as our budget for next year, and, you know, most of your testing will be done, but we're not gonna be in the recommendation phase yet. Or maybe something that maybe would can help empower a budget if there is something there that we should be budgeting for.
Yeah, and, and that's a great point, Commissioner Moppe, because, you know, again, if we, if we continue at, at the rate that we are. Um, and again, this is a kudo to the entire team, Johanna and Doug, but if, if we're really rolling the way we are, I think we're gonna be far ahead of schedule. Um, we should at least know some key points, because we'll have reported to you uh prior to some of that budget setting. Um, some of, getting you some of those options and scenarios, so you'll have a good sense of maybe where you're heading even into that, that budget cycle as well.
Well, we had a kind of a work session with our road supervisor today, and he informed us that he's working with an architect on a building design for the shop out of Gold Dust. I don't know if you guys want that information?
Yeah, if that's already in process and going.
That's what they know.
That could be a great, um, a great feed.
It was.
Well, now that you guys have an architect, we kinda said, maybe you guys would wanna use your architect, those JGT Architects?
I'm familiar with them, but, um, yeah, agnostic, and we'd love to help them and or get their information too, so that starts to feed into the, into the planning as well.
And they are just compiling financial right now. We haven't signed contracts or anything there either, so.
No, it's more of a general thing right now.
Perspective, but I think you guys need to know that. I'm trying to do anything else.
Well, that's, that's great. Thank you for sharing that. Um, but in conclusion, again, really pleased with where we're at, happy to answer any questions that you may all have. And just, again, um, across the board uniformly, there's a lot of gratitude from the internal as well as the external conversation. That this is, this is occurring, that the, the county's taken the initiative to, to really start to envision its, its future. So it's, and we've been very grateful to be a part of it.
The other thing we are working on is um the master transportation plan. We've signed up on that, and that may drive some expense to the investment we need to make in some of those areas, but.
I, I would add just briefly that uh, there's a lot of, it's timely that these conversations are occurring, because there's a lot of federal grant money around a lot of this type of thing, planning, transportation, infrastructure, facilities, public safety across the board, so uh, that is one thing we will continue to keep an eye on for the county as well, for those types of opportunities. And, and again, just uh, kudos to you for being in this far into the process even is gonna help unearth and, and enable the county to take advantage of some of those opportunities.
All right, anybody in the audience, tell me anything you wanna say, any questions, guys? Nope? All right, whoa, wait a minute.
All right, just asking, we, we do own some buildings that are on county property.
If.
If you want.
If it's a, if it's a county-owned property, we, we do have it in the, in the, in the report. However, I don't think we've analyzed privately-owned buildings on county property.
All right, answer your question. County buildings on Edron State.
Oh. I think he's referring to the, the grooming sheds. Oh, okay. We do. Those are accounted for. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you, guys. Appreciate you coming up again, making the trip. The roads are good.
Yeah.
Nice and warm up here.
We're excited.
Awesome. Yeah, good to be with you.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
And I guess we have no public out in front, um, I'm gonna go ahead and adjourn this meeting. Everybody have a good turkey day.
Yeah. Yep, that time of year.